Welcome to the February 23, 2012 meeting. I have 7:32. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Dave Engel and the invocation by Mike Miller.
Pledge of Allegiance through the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Dear Heavenly Father, please keep all our residents in your loving care. Continue to protect our dedicated city employees as they serve around the clock each day. Please help the City Council perform at our best as we faithfully work for the residents of Macedonia. And Lord, please bestow a special blessing upon Mayor Don Cookta and all Macedonia residents who are currently dealing with health issues.
First up on the agenda, we have the comments by the public. If you can come up to the microphone here and state your name and address. Are there any public comments? Public comments?
Is it on? Yeah.
You got nothing?
I don't need it. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I'm only going to take a few minutes of your time. I am not a Macedonia resident. My name is Steve Berry. I'm actually a resident of Green. I was originally growing up in the city of Akron, Ohio. I'm a Democratic candidate for the Summit County Sheriff. This upcoming election in about a week and a half. Quickly, I'm a 32-year veteran of the sheriff's office, having worked in every division. And I just really wanted to introduce myself to you folks. Mayor Cookta was nice enough to have me come up and introduce myself to him and his staff a couple of weeks ago, and I really appreciate it. I would just like you to consider me when you vote on March the 6th. I have another neighborhood group to talk to down in Akron, so if you don't mind, it's okay with council, I'd like to leave a few of these on the stand, some information about me right outside the doors. Okay?
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, Mr. Berry?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I voted absentee ballot today, and I voted for you.
Thank you very much, Eric. Any questions? Thank you, folks, very much. I appreciate your time.
Are there any other public comments?
I do need the microphone, so if it's not on, I'm not. Okay. I was going to comment on this last time, but I didn't realize we were going to a two-three reading, so I'm commenting on it tonight. And this is ordinance three of 2012, which has to do with the ordinance that approved healthcare coverage for the members of City Council effective January 1st, 2012. I know there have been a number of comments last time, and I know there was a newspaper editorial this week about how this occurred. I would just like to bring in a different perspective, which has to do with the budget. Our budget is improved situation, as you know, in the last couple of years. Will be improved up through the beginning of 2014, when the expiration occurs of the 1/4% tax that was put on an emergency basis. What I'm really concerned about is this. That's the beginning of a downturn in the revenue stream, which is basically going to take us down, I think, looking at all the things that are turning off, including state taxes such as the local revenue, government reimbursement that is going on that's reducing itself over the next several years. So if we look at, I'm estimating between that 1/4%, these various state tax revenues coming down, and the expiration of the 1/4% that was put on to build the rec center, we're talking somewhere between $2.7 and $3 million annually in the reduction of our revenues during the period between 2014 and 2016. I don't think it's a good idea to commit to lower priority issues, in my opinion, such as providing the council somewhere between $40,000 and $80,000, depending on how you interpret this, the kinds of funds that are needed to support healthcare coverage for council members. I know that the acting mayor, Mr. Molnar, was not here during that vote. I'd like him to comment and comment on what I'm saying here. In general, I just think it's a very bad idea to make a commitment towards these kinds of financial issues well ahead of having a solid budget. And so that's one comment I have. I do have another comment, and that's regarding the manor house. I know that there's been discussion about giving a one year license. I think that's a good idea, and I hope that the council does consider that and supports that measure. Any other, does anybody want to make any response to what I just said?
Well, to answer your question about the healthcare, I mean, had I been here, it was my intention, I would have voted no. But from what I understand, I don't think it would have changed the vote anyway. But I will rescind anything for that, and I will not take part in it.
Okay, so you're not, well, that might be a point of question for each person, who is going to participate and who's not. But looking, and if they wish to comment, they can. I just think that, given the situation with our budget and the fact that we have a way to reopen our negotiation going on right now, because of the way the contracts were written last year for the labor in this city, that we're probably talking other major areas where there's going to be increases in costs and reductions in revenue do not mix well over the next several years. So that was my only comment. Thank you.
Thanks, Silvio.
Hi, I'm Chad Casmer, resident in Macedonia, 33 years, also the president of the Longwood Manor Historical Society. I've been here before. I just want to say that I'm also supporting this legislation you're going to talk about tonight. It's going to make a lot of people happy, a lot of residents happy, and a lot of members of the Longwood Manor Historical Society happy. We're ready to get started. We're ready to get to work, contact contractors and local businesses, and start getting the manor house fixed up. I think what will happen, once we get the house open, sign up, start working on the house, people will start seeing improvements, residents, and they'll want to help. We'll get more and more people wanting to help to contribute to the project of fixing up that manor house. So I just wanted to say, I hope this goes through very optimistic, and thanks.
Were you here for our work session discussion? I don't remember if you were in there or not.
No, I was not.
Okay, I think, I don't want to speak to everybody, but it sounds like we're in favor of doing this, so.
You are in favor.
If I may.
It's next to me.
I just want to make it clear that we still will need a set of drawings stamped by a registered architect or an engineer prior to issuance of the permit. And you also need licensed contractors with the state of Ohio. They'll have to be registered with the city of Macedonia. Volunteer groups could do painting, things of that nature, but anything of structural repairs or any of the repairs on the list must be completed by registered contractors.
Thank you.
By my project, I live on Rock Creek Road. The only thing I'm asking you people about this manor house, you know it was condemned. They want to work on it, let them work on it. But let them come up with their own money. Don't take no money away from this city and give to these people. Don't give them no money. They want to work on it, let them work on it. Get the money out of their pockets how they want to get it. If they get hurt, they're responsible. City's not responsible for nothing if they get injured there. That's it.
Thank you, Mike.
Hey, Mike, I don't think, we've committed no funds to that, so at this point, we haven't committed any dollars to that whatsoever.
Have no money, go to the, no. If they get hurt, they're responsible for it.
Jim? Jim Krevar?
Yes, sir.
Can you check the microphones, please? I got nothing. Oh, there we go.
You have to actually speak right to that little voice.
Jim Zabel, Macedonia, Berkshire Drive. Going back to the ordinance that was passed last session about city healthcare issues, evidently there's four of you who have said at this point that you're not going to be taking those benefits, which brings the question to Mike. Why did you vote on a measure concerning healthcare that you're not going to be taking advantage of? And the only thing that came to my mind is that you're going to be benefiting from the $60 a month opt-out. And you do the math, 62 times 12, $720 a year per council person. Six of you council people, that's about $4,000 some dollars a year. To me, it sounds like you just voted for self-pay increase. So that's my, that's my take on it. You know, you guys are here to serve the city, the best interest of the residents. I think you need to rescind this, because if you're here to serve the best interests of the residents, you know, you should rescind this. If you're interested in putting some cash in your pockets, then leave it standing.
Mr. Zabel, not only did I not vote for it, I also said I would not take those benefits. So, you know, you're competing with an awfully broad brush, Sheriff.
Not only that, Mr. Zabel, the whole, you know, the whole issue here is the fact that we discussed this measure three, four years ago. And at the time, there were various discussions about whether it was a good thing to do or a bad thing to do. And when we came up with the final draft, which was passed, it was recognized as enabling legislation, and we knew that the law director was going to have to take a look at it. I don't need health benefits, because my wife works for the federal government, and she's been working for the federal government for 26 years. And as far as benefits and as far as being critical of people who take them, I understand you work for, you get a government pension, don't you?
After the last, can I come back and respond?
Well, the whole thing, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to point out is that there's a lot of people in this room right now who receive governmental benefits. And it's very, very easy to criticize, as there was two weeks ago, to criticize employees, to criticize department heads, to criticize elected officials. It's the easiest thing in the world, in the world to do. But what this, what this measure is going to do, it's going to, down the road, encourage people to run for Macedonia City Council. And there's nothing wrong with that, and I think from that standpoint, it's an extremely positive measure. And as far as the $720, you know what? I'm not going to take that. I wasn't planning to take it. I really don't care about that. But what I do care about is that if people want to serve on this council, and if people want to avail themselves of health benefits that they pay for, because they're not getting them for free, they're paying for them, they should be able to do it. But I don't need them. I've been an advocate of this for about the past four or five years. And if you take a look at other communities, particularly Green and some of the other communities, they provide health benefits. This is nothing new. This is nothing extraordinary. Council hasn't had a raise in, since I've been here, in, I believe it is, 10 years, we get paid $5,000 a year. It is just, it is just silly to ask people who serve on this body to put in the amount of time and effort that they do, and in my opinion, not offer them expanded services that are available to people who live and, who work within our city government and who are a part of it. And for that reason, it's going to be a good idea down the road, because I'm sure it will pass muster. I talked to Mr. Deemer before the, before the ordinance was proposed, and I told him that there were parts of it that will be examined. And the proper thing is taking place, which, once the ordinance was passed, Mr. Deemer submitted it to the proper group for review. And that group will render a decision.
You know, I read a letter in the newsletter this, this week that you, they published for you, that you did. And I generally don't respond to that, and I wasn't going to respond to that one either, but you come up here and started asking questions. But you spoke of a part-time job in a county employee. Well, I'm the only county employee up there. I made it quite clear I wasn't going to take any of those benefits. The reason I voted for it was for people that would come on board after I'm leaving, and I made it quite clear to everybody that I plan on leaving in 22 months. I will not do this again. And for 60 bucks a month, if you think it was worth the aggravation for $60 a month for me to do that, that's so far from the truth, I can't even, I don't know how to convince you of that, but it's, it's really, it's nothing. When somebody comes up here and takes my seat afterwards, if they want to take themselves, you know, I want people to get involved, and, you know, if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. And I made that, I made that speech twice when I was running, is that I wasn't going to sit back as a resident and throw bombs at my city administration without getting up there and saying, hey, I want to be part of this, and I would like to see anybody that wants to be part of this to, to run in two years and get involved.
Well, I'll respond now, since bombs have been hurled.
No bombs have been hurled. This has been a discussion.
Yes, it is.
No, Mr. Zabel, you know, and the other thing about this is, I mean, I had school board people give me a call after you published your letter in the paper, and, you know, it was quite interesting, because they said-
It's about council or suddenly about me right now?
I think it's about, I think it's, I just want to point out that the school board-
One at a time.
I think I just want to point out that you were opponent and opponent of the levies. You opposed books for children, you opposed computers for children, you opposed things for children that would help them learn, and that's what the school said.
Wow, you really, wow.
I do believe that, by the way, because that school did not have enough money.
Let me tell you something about my school that I graduated from and the community I grew up in. If I didn't support it, I wouldn't have wrote a check for $100 out of my pocket for awards for the band. I wouldn't have had my wife and myself driving kids around for the years that my son was in band for Tag Day. I wouldn't have been buying books or buying their programs for self-starting and, you know, their fundraisers, okay? Don't give me that crap, sir, all right? This is about Macedonia, not the school board right now. You want to talk about the school board? We'll go somewhere and talk about the school board. I'm here to talk about Macedonia, me. You forgot that. Okay, you're here to serve me and everybody in this audience. You did, okay? Don't bring up the school board. Let's talk Macedonia, okay? Now, to respond to your one question, yes, I get a federal retirement for my 20 years service in the military. $1,200 bucks a month, all right? For 20 years of having my life on the line, doing a dangerous damn job, all right? Now, the difference between you and me with that? I didn't vote myself a pay increase. I couldn't vote myself a pay increase. I stayed in for 20 years because I felt the ability to serve, okay? It wasn't about money, all right? You can change the rules whenever you want. I couldn't. You know how I changed the rules if I wanted? I got the hell out, okay? You don't like what you do, stop running for reelection, walk away, all right? That's your opportunity. Now, also, on top of that, the state of Ohio allowed us, through the voters, to get extra money for being Afghan and Iraqi war veterans. You know what? I turned it down. I didn't take it. Number one, because I don't think I deserve it. Number two, there are people that don't have limbs or part of their mind that would deserve it more than me. And number three, it's not my job to willy-nilly take the taxpayers' money like that. I have something called a moral compass that obviously is a little bit different from yours. Now, Mr. Barker, going back to your point, if I can recall it after I was insulted here by Mr. Martin.
Oh, just a second. No, if you're going to go, Mr. Barker, let me, no, let me finish. I want to point out that that's a huge part of the problem with what you're saying. There's not a single member of council up here who has taken any money at all. There's not a single member of council here who has accepted health benefits.
Because it's a part-time job.
Wait a minute.
Part-time people, I know, get-
Wait a minute. Mr. Hanslick, could you give us the status of that legislation right now? What is Mr. Deemer doing with it?
The last email thread that I saw is that the entire document is going to the Ohio Ethics Commission for Review with the specific question of whether or not it meets parameters of the state law with regards to ethics council, including the question with regards to, is this a pay raise?
Why wasn't that done before? It came to Thompson.
I can't answer that. So you pass an ordinance, and they check to see if it's legal.
Well, I think the reason was, is that the answer was, is from the Law Department, is that was legal. And now, in an overpass, if FOSH requested the date to send it to the Ethics Commission, it's going to the Ethics Commission. But there was an opinion that was granted by the Law Department indicating that it was legal.
Because I just want to point out that that's, that's the misinformation that has been passed around town, and that's the part that I don't care for. When somebody says council has voted themselves a raise and council's getting health benefits, and you have four or five members of council who aren't even going to avail themselves of this legislation, or the money's being returned, because nobody up here has received a dime, nobody up here has accepted health benefits, and that's, that's the whole problem. It's not the fact that you're opposed to them. I can understand how people of good faith can be opposed, but at the same time, to instead say to people that, oh, you're voting yourself a raise, oh, you're accepting health benefits, simply not true, because nobody up here has accepted a dime.
Okay, very well. So I-
And on top of that, I also want to spell another rumor that I understood came out of your quarter, that my wife and I were getting a divorce, and that's the reason that I was asking for health benefits, because that's how vicious, that's how vicious it has been. Sorry, pal, and I don't appreciate that.
What? Where do you come off telling the people that I said that?
I didn't say you.
Guys, can you address Mr. Barker now? Can we move on, please?
Yes, I'll move on to some coherency. Mr. Barker, you talk about sitting out here, you know, throwing bombs. Well, let me tell you this. The condition of my employment, my full-time employment, is that at any given moment during the course of the year, I can be taken out to Fort Knox, Kentucky, or Joint Baseball and Police Corps in Washington State for three months, okay? Now, the way I see it, because in a public position, I put the community first and the residents first, I can't run for office, because what happens if I run for office and if I get elected? I sit down here, and the next thing you know, I'm told, pack your bags for three months, you're going out to Lewis McCord. Does that do the residents of this community any good? Is that good faith with them? They're electing me, if that happens, to sit here and run the business of the city. Me going away for three months is not holding up to that commitment to them. I'm not going to put the community in a position to not have me do my job for them. And that's why I'm not sitting over there, that's why I'm not sitting on the school board, because my full-time employment, I have requirements and duties obligated to that. I'm a citizen. You all work for me, can you understand? You work for me. You take my tax dollars, I'm your boss. End of discussion. My job as your boss is to question you, to inquire, to ask about what you're doing with my money and the rest of the residents' money.
Mr. Zabel, my job is not to work for you, it's to work for the residents of Macedonia. And that's the type of arrogant selfishness that you have that clouds the validity of your opinions. You're just, you're just too negative. My God.
Mr. Zabel, I wasn't, I specifically said you, I said anybody, this, the reason I put this in here is, you know what, I'd love to have you come knocking on my door 22, or a year and a half now and saying, hey, sign this petition, but I understand you may have convinced you can't do that, but there's a lot of other people out there that this may entice people to come and say, hey, I can make a few extra dollars, I can make an extra 60 bucks, because council's never going to probably vote themselves a pay raise. That was my whole intention of doing it.
See, that's the problem. You shouldn't be asking people to have this position for their money.
Hold on, I've let you finish, and I haven't interrupted you. But you said, the way that you change the rules is to get involved and be up here and make, so that you can make those decisions. And a three-month leave of absence for whatever, I don't know what you do, but I appreciate your libertarian views, mostly you have the same in line with mine, but three months, I don't think it would be an unreasonable leave of absence from council if you were doing something. I personally would be okay with it, but, you know, I understand that you, you want to allow yourself to do that.
No, because I don't feel I'm fulfilling my responsibilities, but that's my approach on it. But here's the thing.
You love to argue, don't you? Huh?
No.
I think you really do.
It's called debate.
The thing is, we work together, and you work for us, because you're taking our tax dollars, bottom line. You may not agree with it, Mr. Martin, but you know what? You've made that self-evident, that you're here with a leader perhaps. But we've had four people run for mayor-
Mr. Zabel, you don't, you don't run for office. I'm just sick of listening to him.
I think we have enough people interested in the process and coming forth to be a part of it, so.
That was great when I saw the four people run, but like I said, I said last week, is the first time I ran, four people for four slots. Second time, five people for four slots. And I was the one that got council to be reduced in number 22 months from now, something I'm proud of doing.
Do you want full-time benefits? Become a full-time council. Come up with a plan, reduce membership, present a salary. Put it to the vote.
I don't, full-time politicians, you see where Washington's got us with that.
Yeah, they get health benefits. Have you been down to Washington and testified? Let me see, the state legislators, the state senators, I mean, you know, you know what else, you know what else we ought to get? We ought to get the PRS medical benefits that me and Mr. Engel have vested for. We ought to get them, too.
Mr. President, if I could, just a reminder that we've got an agenda to follow, and the agenda indicates that this portion is public comment. It's not that point in time for individuals of the residency to come up here and question all of you. It's not that point in time, actually, for council to respond to that questioning. This is open for public comment only. And the council's time to talk is at the end of the agenda. The more appropriate time to address all of these questions and issues would have been at the time when the ordinance was being called for the question. So that being said, this is public comment. Council have a chance to talk later on and then address each and every one of those pieces of ordinances, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Tom. Are there any other public comments? All right, moving on, we're going to start with pending our new legislation, Resolution Number 7, 2012.
I'd like to offer Resolution 7-2012 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Make a motion that we waive the 48-hour rule.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll read it for the second. A resolution opposing state collection of municipal income taxes.
What's your pleasure?
I'm going to be passing, pass and post Resolution 7, 2012, according to the law.
Second.
Rule call. Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Daryl?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Resolution 7, 2012 passes. Up next is Resolution 8, 2012.
I offer a Resolution Number 8, 2012, for its first reading by title only.
A resolution authorizing all members of the various boards and commissions to be eligible to receive recreation fee discounts to Macedonia Family Recreation Center.
I just want to point out that this resolution, which would offer discounts to members, persons who serve on various committees within our community, boards, it was suggested by Kurt Lawbinger, and I think it's an excellent idea. Some council members felt that it needed further study. That's why we only had a first reading. But I would just like to make sure that by the time our next meeting rolls around in a couple of weeks, that we have this measure ready for passage and that it receives full approval, because I think we need to recognize the persons who serve on commissions and committees within our city, and offer them an opportunity to be a part of the rec center, and at the same time, to give them something back for the service that they've been providing, been providing to our community.
Thank you, Ken. Ordinance 9, 2012.
President, I'd like to offer ordinance 9, 2012, for its first, second, third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
An ordinance amending and supplementing the 2012 Temporary Appropriations Ordinance 73, 2011, and authorizing payment to Morton-Saw Company.
What's your pleasure?
Before we go on, I just explained that we are, there are three issues on this appropriation. The first is a fire grant, and that's for money that's already been received by the The first is a fire grant, and that's for money that's already been received by the city, and we're now appropriating to spend that grant. The other one is for equipment for streets and lighting, sixteen thousand dollars, and that was for damage that was done to the city light poles as a result of an accident, and it's an insurance settlement. So those both are budget neutral, and the third is forty-five thousand dollars, which is in the budget, will be in the final budget, but we need to pay Morton-Saw Company because it's winter, even though it's been a light winter, we still have to have help. So that's why we're making this appropriation at this time. I'd like to make a motion that we waive the forty-eight hour rule, and I would offer this, our move that we post and pass according to law.
Our second, whatever that was.
Mr. Barker?
Excuse me, yes, I'm sorry, excuse me, yes.
Ms. Daryl?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Moller?
Yes.
Ordinance Nine passes. Ordinance Ten, Two Thousand Twelve.
I'd like to offer ordinance Ten, Two Thousand Twelve for its first reading by title only.
Second. We're just going to do one reading, we both need a second, thanks. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a Macedonia occupancy program grant agreement with TPC Wire and Cable Corp.
Just want to point out that this is the old Greco building that's going to be filled, and I just think that council's done a very, very good job in taking a look at, there was an ordinance that was before us, council rejected that ordinance. They wanted to put a conditional use there that would have been in perpetuity, and I felt it was a bluff on the part of the broker. It was. Right after that ordinance failed, they went ahead and they put tenants in the building and also the planning commission, Ed Morris, Mock, and Kevin, and the mayor did a real good job putting together a package for these people.
Thanks, Ken. Ordinance Eleven, Two Thousand Twelve.
I'd like to offer ordinance Eleven, Two Thousand Twelve for its first, second, and third reading by title only.
All in favor?
I need a second?
Second.
Pardon?
Okay, and then I know you're going to want to do the forty-eight hour, right?
I'd like to make a motion that we waive the forty-eight hour rule.
Our second, Ed.
And I'll read this. An ordinance granting a one-year license to the Longwood Manor Historical Society to enter upon the premises known as the Longwood Manor House for the purpose of making a restoration assessment and thereafter architectural and building plans pursuant to code, and thereafter renovate and restore the building.
What's your pleasure?
Move that we pass and post according to law, ordinance Number Eleven, Two Thousand Twelve.
Second.
Rule call?
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Daryl?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Moller?
Yes.
Ordinance Eleven, Two Thousand Twelve passes. Ordinance Twelve, Two Thousand Twelve?
I'd like to offer ordinance Twelve dash Twenty Twelve for its first reading by title only, please.
Second.
An ordinance establishing Shepherd Road within the boundaries of the City of Macedonia to be a non-through street with a maximum speed of twenty-five miles an hour.
I'd just like to point out with ordinance Twelve, in our work session, we had somewhat of a spirited debate about this one. A resident had brought this forward and asked that we consider with council on the floor, so that is why we're seeing this right now.
You know, Nick, and in connection with that, we need to hear from other residents, how they feel about this, because does it stand that there was just either one or maybe a small number of residents?
There was one with speaking to residents around him, he stated that they felt that this was a necessity.
Yeah, because this is something that almost would kind of beg for a public hearing because it would be a big change for the people living in that area.
Do we want to schedule a public hearing for our next meeting?
I think we should, I'd like to.
Or is that thirty days before?
Well, why don't you wait till what the engineer has said? Is it Nick, Mr. Latz, if Nick Feeney was looking at this, couldn't you want to hear what the engineer has?
Mike?
Yes, I mean, a traffic study would have to be performed on this in order to get this changed, and I don't think that this would actually be something that would be warranted.
I'll give you a free traffic study. I have a hard time going twenty-five miles in a thirty-five mile zone.
Well, and make it a non-through street, as I'm sure the chief could attest, I worked the road for nineteen years, that is a difficult thing to enforce, if, I wouldn't say impossible, but it'd be very difficult. I mean, we have trouble enforcing the trucks on Twinsburg Road, right? So it's just food for thought and we got time...
It's extremely difficult, yes.
Yes.
And I think the chief, and not to speak for you, but I think you indicated in opening or in the work session that you were opposed to this, as police chief, as I recall.
Yes, I am against this, yes.
And what are your reasons again?
I don't think the street is a twenty-five mile an hour zone, it is a thirty-five, it would cause a huge inconvenience to a lot of the residents who live in the south half of the city because they would have to go around Shepherd Road, which never was designed for that. It is a through street, period. There are state laws that, there's state laws that differentiate why this road can be twenty-five, why this one can be thirty-five, why it could be all the way up through, so I mean, and it doesn't sound like that road would meet that criteria for a lower. That's more like a deep wood road, right? Exactly. A very residential type road, so, but it's something we'll more than want to at least, you know, debate.
Are there any other motions or legislative actions? Barring none, is there any correspondence from the clerk?
I have one, sir. Thank you for the ride in your new ambulance. Unfortunately, the emergency call to Marymount Hospital, but the place was glowing and your reputation is glowing, Doris Robinson, and this was with firefighter paramedics, Dave Chesnick, Joan Natalee, Ed Morack, and Jim Kreevar. It went well, she did have to go to the hospital, but she says it was glowing remarks about the new ambulance and unfortunately having to be in there, so I paraphrase it a little bit.
Hey, Tim, you know, they're sending people into space now and they charge them money. Maybe we could set up some sort of fee-based program to just ride in their ambulance and we can charge them a few bucks here.
And we get fire truck rides for free on Halloween, so...
Yeah, I mean, maybe we could generate enough money to pay for the city council's health insurance, don't you think?
No comment.
No comment?
Thank you, Josephine. Mayor's report, he's not present, so we will not have that. Committee reports?
The planning commission will meet on Monday, and we have a lot split to consider, and Popeyes Chicken is going to be taking over the Kentucky Fried Chicken Outlot parcel at the Macedonia Commons, so we are going to have a Popeyes in Macedonia. Other than that, the schedule for the planning commission is fairly light.
Any other committee reports?
Mr. President, finance met last week, and one of the issues that was raised by one of the residents earlier is future financial health of the city. We're anticipating approximately a five thousand, excuse me, five million dollar carryover at the end of two thousand twelve, which we're going to continue to work on that, and of course in two thousand and thirteen, in anticipation of the gap in time between when the quarter percent falls off and when the rec center and the R fade off in two thousand and sixteen. We have another finance committee meeting scheduled for March fifteenth at seven o'clock. We're going to be discussing issues of capital, particularly road projects for this year, and we hope to finish the budget at that time to be able to pass it at the next meeting.
Yeah, one thing I wanted to mention in connection with the finance committee meeting, another, a number of items came up, things that we discussed, and I've had an opportunity to think about our meeting, and what I'm going to ask council to do, I want to bring the police force up to full strength. This means that we would be adding three more policemen, and I think it's critical. I had one of my neighbors tell me about a month or two ago that his garage was robbed, and he felt that because we don't have enough police officers on the street that this occurred. I agree with him, but I am not going to approve a budget that does not have these additional three policemen. We passed a levy, and we're going to use that money from the levy to make our community safe, and we're going to take the awful pressure off our police department. I never wanted to lay off policemen in the first place, however, I was made part, we're just encouraged to be part of a united front so council could work as a whole, and now I'm going to ask council to work as a whole to bring these three policemen on so we can be full strength. Secondly, I'm also going to ask, too, that the rec center be given a budget of one thousand dollars for maintenance and repairs to take place within the rec center. And not only that, there's also outstanding a proposal to replace the playground equipment in Longwood Park, and that's approximate cost of eighty-five thousand dollars, but the three policemen, the hundred thousand dollars for the rec center, and the replacement of the playground equipment, those will be non-negotiable items as far as I'm concerned for this budget. It needs to get done. We asked the residents to pass a tax increase, they did. We need to give them back what we promised them. I hope we will. And the whole point is, is that I want to bring this city's police force back up to full strength, and also, I'm very, very impressed with the rec center because that building, that service, that particular program has more participation than any other Macedonia event or project or activity than I've seen since I've lived here within the past thirty years. We just need to get that done.
Any other committee reports? Barring non-department reports, Mr. Kreevar?
Yes. Mike and I attended a ODOT District Four meeting, and they announced that they're planning on paving, grinding and paving two seventy-one within our city limits. That will also include some bridge work and bridge painting. All that work is to be done at night, and I believe it's supposed to start sometime in April, if I'm right, Mike, weather permitting. Service crews are doing pretty much the same, pothole patching, more street tree trimming, and some building renovations. That's all I have.
Thanks, Jim. Mr. Latz?
Yes, thank you. Highland Road will be starting back up soon. We've got progress meetings scheduled, and as details unfold of the plan of attack, I will put it on the website and let everybody know the results of that meeting. Dunkin' Donuts is still under review. We have several comments on there, but they are coming, and construction will start this spring, and also Popeyes Chicken is going into where KFC was.
Mike, is there a specific date for Dunkin' Donuts at this point, or is it just spring?
Well, it's just spring right now because the first set of reviews, we turned down both architectural, the building plans, and engineering, so they're, you know, currently making the changes we need and resubmitting, so I'm assuming by the time that, you know, we issue building permits, it'll be another month or so.
Hey, Mike, what about the lot split? We've got one that's controversial.
In the planning commission? Yeah, they did submit some drawings, Nick is reviewing them. We finally got engineer stamp on the drawings, and the topo does look a lot better than what we've received in the past. I still have not received a letter from the homeowners association stating that it meets the covenants and deed restrictions for that area, though, so we cannot, even if the plans do get approved, I still need that letter to issue permit.
Because I noticed that, too, there was no letter in there from the homeowners association.
Right.
So I just don't feel comfortable, I guess, considering what's taken place in the other arena regarding the other lots, but whether the planning commission should even act on it. So unless you receive one by Monday, if you do, email it to us.
All right.
What's the timeframe on the Popeyes?
Popeyes is coming in with their signed package to the next planning commission, and as soon as their signs are approved, they want to get in. They're not going to make any renovations other than painting and cleaning it up, so...
Thanks, Mike. Angela?
Thank you. I just have one announcement, and that is that the Recreation Department is planning a family pool party night on Friday, March ninth. This is open to residents, non-residents. It's from seven to nine, so it's after hours, and we have a DJ schedule, there'll be music, contests, games, prizes, lots of activities going on. We want this to be successful so we can continue to offer these on a regular basis, so if you're interested, we encourage you to attend. You can pre-register or you can pay that night at the door, and again, that's March ninth. Thank you.
Thanks, Angela.
Yeah.
Scott?
Thank you. I just want to report January receipts exceeded the expenses. We had nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six sixty-four in receipts, our expenses were eight eighty-two, eight eighty-nine, which means we're up ninety-six thousand, seven seventy-four as we closed January. And as Mr. Martin said, we'll have some scenarios as far as how we want to spend the capital at the next finance meeting on the fifteenth, and we've already discussed bringing back two full-time police officers this year, and that the question was whether we're going to be able to afford one into two thousand and thirteen, and we'll run some scenarios, and we have a lot of positive things, just like the TPC Wire mop ordinance, they're supposed to bring over ninety jobs, full-time jobs, and so there's a lot of, and again, just like small businesses like Popeyes coming in. So even though we're going to lose that quarter percent, I'm hoping that the economy stays strong and our businesses also then take up some of the slack on the income tax. But that's all I have, and be looking forward in the next meeting.
Scott, when you, when you do come together, I think it's on the fifteenth, you said, I spoke to Ken about that, and those three things he talked about, I'm in favor, there's also, and I hate to add more things to it, but as I recall, we're not, when we put the levy on a few years ago for the fire department, we're still not staffing like we said we would, is that, if that's the case, Chief?
Yes, sir, I believe we're one man down.
Okay, I think we should probably, I think we need to consider that as well.
Okay.
I would be in accord with that, and I hope residents who want to see the rec center improved, that is, maintenance being done and the playgrounds being improved, get in touch with your council person, call him, tell him what you think. I think residents who want to see more policemen, more Macedonia policemen on the road, call your council person and tell him what you think, because right now, we need to move on this, and up to this point, we've been a little too cautious because of the economy, but we got over four million right now, so there shouldn't be an excuse. It's time to provide the services that we promised to our residents when this levy passed.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Thanks. Chief Black?
Thank you, Shane. We are down one person around the clock in the fire department, we dropped from five to four, and that is part-time, we don't have to do any hiring to be able to do that, the part-timers are here, that is a part-time shift, and it would be just a matter of reinstating that and letting them come back in and work that time. The Eighth Annual St. Pets Day is a pet food donation drive sponsored by the Celtic Club that will benefit hu, benefit, human animal rescue group, humane animal rescue groups, got that, in Summit County, Stark and Portage Counties. Residents can donate dry dog food and cat food and cat litter here at the Macedonia Fire Department, March first through the thirty-first, Monday through Friday, eight till four. There's over seventy donation sites, mostly fire departments in those counties, obviously due to the emergency nature of the fire departments, there might not always be somebody at the fire department, so please stop back if you have a donation. For additional information, look at St. Pets Day page on Facebook, and please try to drop off some dog food to the fire departments. I have a statement from the mayor's family. On Friday, February twenty-seventh, Mayor Don Cooker was visiting a family member at Hillcrest Hospital. During his visit, he became ill. At that time, he was admitted for observation... at Hillcrest Hospital. During his visit, he became ill. At that time, he was admitted for observation. On Monday, a heart catheterization was performed. On Tuesday, February 21st, the mayor underwent bypass surgery. Per his surgeon, there was no heart attack. There was no permanent damage, and the surgery could not have gone better. The mayor is resting comfortably, surrounded by his family, and is in good spirits. His recovery is very optimistic, and the family has expressed sincere appreciation for all of the support from the community. So that's all I have.
Thanks, Chief. Chief Golden?
I want to thank Mr. Martin for his comments. We have been extremely low in personnel in the police department. It would be very nice to get those three laid-off officers back, so thank you.
Yeah, Chief, do you know which particular home was burglarized?
Which time?
That was the gentleman at, yeah, I know. It's a good one. Which time? The gentleman on the corner of Harret Court?
Yes.
He's a police officer in Brexville. Do you recall what was taken from his home? I think it was a, they just pulled up a pickup truck.
Some other property.
Right.
He's a police officer?
That was a bad target, wasn't it?
Very bad target. And he said that they wouldn't have even known that it happened, but his wife happened to be home, looked out, saw what was taking place. And he talked to me about it very vocally, even beyond you, Mr. Zabel. He talked to me about it very vocally about the fact that his house had been burglarized. So you have competition.
Tom, that.
Thank you, Mr. Moeller.
By the way, just to, I don't want to keep going, I know there's other departments that also have not recovered. I know that Jim's missing an assistant. I'm pretty sure that the finance department, which you weren't here when that unfortunate happened. We just got to kind of, you know, triage it and go in order the best we think we can. So you're not forgotten about.
Do we have any unfinished business? Any new business?
Make a motion to go to executive session to discuss personnel.
Second.
All in favor?
Oh, I have to, I have a job with that. I have to do it vocal. Mr. Barker?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Daryl?
Yes.
Mr. Engel? Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Moeller?
Yes.
All right, we will adjourn into council caucus for.
Are we going to come back?